There's a transportation plan, right?
Well, it's just the open house. I've already been part of all of that.
Yeah, you'll be like...
Welcome to our May 13, 2014 Gilbert Town Council Study Session. We are pleased, Agenda Item Number One, to welcome two special guests. And Darrell Colvin from our Gilbert Public School Board will do a brief introduction of our school superintendent-to-be in just a few weeks, Dr. Christina Kishimoto. And that will be top priority today, and it's good to have the two of you here. Darrell?
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, thanks for having us here at your meeting. Speaking, I believe, on behalf of our entire school board, it's with great honor that I can introduce a guest to you today. Someone who's got nine years in K-12 leadership, someone who spent three years as the superintendent of the schools in Hartford, Connecticut, four years in policy development and accountability at the Connecticut State Department of Education, as well as spending eight years working in higher education. I think we'll all agree that Gilbert is an A-rated community for giving out letter grades. And I'm proud to tell you that the Gilbert school system is also an A-rated district, I think as much as anything reflective of our A-rated community. But with an A-rated community such as we have, with the resources and the families and so forth, we have the opportunity to go on to be not just an A-rated district, but one of the finest school districts in the country. And I believe under the leadership of Dr. Kishimoto, we can get there. We are very excited about her background, that the vision that she's bringing, and we've all pledged to do everything in our power to help her be successful in every way. And so, anything I add further, I'll just be taking away from her very excellent comments. So I introduce to you now Dr. Kishimoto.
So, good evening, Mayor Lewis and council members. I thank you for having me here. I am gonna just try to get this up. I have a PowerPoint that's brief. It does help sometimes for the public to be able to see what I'm talking about visually. And I thank the public for being here this evening as well. I thank you for having a few minutes to share with you my thinking in terms of where I am right now. I've had a week and a half here in the district, had an opportunity to meet with parents across schools, teachers across schools, all of the school principals, community partners who came together as well. I also went to site visits at all of our junior high schools in the Gilbert Public Schools. This is a very exciting community to come to, and I'm very, very proud to become part of the Gilbert Public Schools family in the town of Gilbert. I've also just closed on a house a few days ago at Val Vista Lakes, and so I'm trying to settle there and be ready to start our new school year and just do everything that we need to do as leaders, to be ready for our families and to be ready for our work as well. I want to just give a quick overview of some of my thinking as I meet with various community leaders and our educational leaders. Mr. Colvin made, I think, a great statement around our vision for not just saying that we are an A-rated district, but really thinking about what that means in terms of where we take that, in terms of where we take Gilbert as a town, where we position ourselves statewide, and even position ourselves as a leader in terms of educational excellence at the national level. We have that opportunity to do that. One of the important things as we in public education are receiving pressures from all sides about what our core work is, is to make sure that we start by reminding everyone that our core work, the reason we exist, is really around teaching and learning. It is about our students. It is about ensuring that our students are receiving the best education in each of our classrooms across the district, along with the type of support services that they need to succeed and to be college and career-ready. Our primary constituents due to that core business that we are engaged in is to focus on our students and our teachers first, and to ensure that they have the resources and supports that they need to succeed, and from there build out the organization and the system to support our students and teachers. And the vision that we set for the next decade in Gilbert Public Schools is really gonna provide the context for how we're gonna engage in our planning. Now, one of the things I speak to all the time is about being student-centered. And so, how we define student-centredness, maybe that's a made-up word, is to make sure that we're on the same page in terms of what that means to us as a community. And I always use the leading question, is this good for kids? In every decision that we make, whether it's an operational decision, a budget decision, instructional decision, whether it's a decision around how we're spending our time, are we paying attention first to what's good for kids? And in doing so, we're always going to be focused on protecting the classroom, the instructional quality that needs to happen in the classroom. It's also important, as we are focused on children, to apply child and youth development theory. Really, what is it that our young people need at every stage of their development and build that into our instructional approach? We also want to make sure that we create leadership opportunities for our young people. And we do that through partnerships. We do that by partnering up Town Council with the school system to make sure our young people have great leadership development opportunities. We also want to give students choices and learning activities. Doing the same thing at the same time for everyone at a grade level in a content area is really an old approach to education. What we know is that young people develop at different rates, at different levels. They're engaged based on their interest areas, and we want to make sure all of our classes provide opportunities for choice, for young people to decide what kind of learning activities they're engaged in, and also what deliverables they're going to be producing. We have an opportunity in Gilbert Public Schools to use a blended learning approach at a much higher level than we're using it. That's going to mean really doing an assessment of our technology infrastructure in the district. And I think there's so much more that we can be doing in our classroom as I tour schools in terms of providing teachers and students the tools to engage in blended learning. Blended learning is using technology to advance access to information, to advance the kind of deliverables that they can produce. And we want to use 21st century learning skills for our students embedded in all of our classes, how to work in groups, how to use technology, how to engage in critical thinking. Now, one of the important things that I will be doing in partnership with the board is leading with vision. We're gonna be working on a new vision statement for the public school system. We're gonna be setting goals and priorities for the next three years. And in order to support that internally, I will be engaging my staff on an initiative map. An initiative map is looking at all the initiatives we have internally and look at whether that aligns with the goals and priorities that we have set, and whether they're truly student-driven. And so, we're gonna be engaging that over the next few months. We want to look at current and trend performance data. We want to make sure that none of our students are left behind because we're looking at our A-rating, that we're looking at our performance as a group. We want to make sure every school is successful, every classroom, every child. And we'll be using this to develop a strategic plan for the district, that's a multi-year strategic plan. That plan will be very clearly targeted to three to no more than five goals. It'll have annual targets. It'll have organizational measures for how we talk about success in Gilbert Public Schools. And it'll also talk about the kind of partners we'll be looking for to help us to deliver on this plan. Now, one of the incredible things that is certainly evident to me as I considered this position, as the board considered me, and as we made this decision together, is the incredible strengths of Gilbert Public Schools. We have a deep history here of the school system embedded with the town history. We have high-performing schools with lots of opportunities. And one of the things that I've noticed is I don't think that we showcase our strengths as much as we can. There are incredible things happening in our schools, and when we talk about why should a parent choose Gilbert Public Schools over other choice options that are available to them, they need to know all of the opportunities that are part of our school system. We need to showcase those. Our students continue to perform at a competitive level in the Ames Exam, and we have talented teachers who are providing those opportunities for students to succeed. We also have high-quality choice options. We have a biotech program. We have some great programs involving auto-technology, automotive technology. We have some STEM opportunities. We have opportunities throughout this district, and we should look at those as models of excellence that we can actually replicate as potential intra-district, within our district choice options, that we can replicate to increase opportunities for our families to engage with schools. I'm very excited about the kind of town values we have here. We're focused on faith and family and community, and I'm looking forward to being a partner with Town Council and with all of our leaders in the local community. We have a changing landscape in education, and one of the things that I'm often asked about in my time here is where I stand on particular issues. One of the things, one of my responses is, education is a system, an organization, an approach to our teaching of our students that is changing decade after decade, year after year. And we can either lead within that change or fight the change. And I think fighting some of those changes is gonna keep us behind rather than allowing us to stand in front of those changes. So some of those changes are increased opportunities nationally and interstate and in this community for parents to be empowered with choice. And so, we should be leading in terms of the kind of intra, within-district choices that we're providing our families. Also, return on investment is a common conversation in education today. What we're investing through tax dollars, through our resources, what are we truly getting in terms of student performance and student outcomes? And we need to be talking the lingo that our community is really asking us to respond to. Also, our community is asking for more seamless opportunities between K-12 and higher education. I'm very proud of some of the schools that I've developed where students graduate with both a high school degree and an associate's degree because of partnerships with colleges. There are great ways in which we can advance our students who are ready for these kind of opportunities. Instructional technology is an area we're gonna have to take a hard look at in terms of really looking at our readiness and innovations in design in our public school system. We're constantly being asked to think differently in terms of public education. So questions for us to consider as we work together? What's our vision ultimately for Gilbert Public Schools? I look forward to that work with my board. How are we defining our standards of excellence? We talk about excellence. What does that really look like? Are we structured, resourced, and prepared to deliver on our vision on educational excellence? What are we missing? Where are our strengths? Are we clear about how we're defining our student-centered priorities and outcome measures? Are those public? Are we talking about those outcome measures? And how do we want the public school system to interact with and contribute to broader goals of the community? Those should be seamless, and we should be having those conversations, and I look forward to working with you on that. I've shared four guiding assumptions with the community as I'm having various conversations. Where we're starting is really at Gilbert Schools. The assumption is that we will advance our college and career offerings throughout our district. We will be paying attention to the readiness of our students to be competitive. Secondly, that we will be paying attention to how we attract, retain, and support our talented and high-quality staff and leaders as part of this community. The third assumption is that we're gonna be noted for our student-centered approaches through innovation, high-quality instruction, and contribution to community and society. And finally, a guiding assumption is that we're gonna be among the top-performing districts in the state of Arizona and the pride of the Gilbert community. And I am, I thank the board, I thank the community for being so welcoming of me, and I look forward to the work that we're gonna do together.
Thank you. To the council, as you know, we were trying to schedule a joint meeting with the school board, and in the month of May it just didn't work out. And Dr. Kishimoto stayed an extra day, just so she could come to the study session. And to Gilbert leadership, this is town leadership here today, and we're just welcoming you and look forward to when you'll be here in a few weeks full-time. Thanks for sharing that high-level vision, and we realize that you've met many, and there's many more to meet, and that vision will continue, and we'll do whatever we can to help. We do have a couple Tigers here on the council. I think you can, look at that face. You can see right there the Tiger, a couple Toros? A couple Toros? But we mix together, and we've got a great product here in Gilbert. To the council, this is not a question-answer time, but just any quick comments you'd like to make before Board Member Colvin and Dr. Kishimoto move on to their next meeting? Any Tiger comments? You know, we have great schools like Hawks and Coyotes and Wildcats and so forth, but is there a Tiger comment you wanted to make?
Well, other than the Gilbert Tigers rule, just wanted to say as... (laughter) Class of '89, anyway? Anyway, okay. No, we welcome you. We are very excited. I've got three kids in the district, and right now I'm also a product of Gilbert Schools. Very excited about the things you've outlined so far. Can't wait to see them rolling out. And anything we can do, and I think I speak for all of us, anything we can do to support and help, we are right there, ready to do it. So welcome aboard, and we look forward to working with you.
Tiger to my right?
So, class of '96. I mean, it's a little better, but no. I enjoyed my Gilbert Public Schools education. It was a wonderful experience. Actually, my father also graduated from Gilbert High. Of course, it was at Mesquite Junior at the time. So, long history with the Gilbert Public Schools. Appreciate their service, and I'm proud of my education from there. It was wonderful. So, we do want to support you, anything we can do. I love the ideas of measurable outcomes, interacting more with the parents. A lot of great ideas there. Very excited about it. Thank you for presenting to us today, and we're grateful for the opportunity to be a partner with you in the community.
You may have heard last week, we had two well-known individuals in the biomedical life science field from ASU-COM, and they also had a chance to see some of the Campbell Verdi students in their projects that they've been working on all year, and they were very impressed, very complimentary of our local education assets. And so, thank you again both for being here, and look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, and then we'll go back to Two. And this will be to have a presentation on the constituent inquiry system, which was put together by one of our special individuals. Kurt is going to tell us a little bit about the overview, and who is going to be making the presentation. Kurt, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, I'm Kurt Sharp, Special Assistant to the Mayor, and I am here to introduce Laura Medina. Laura is a student at THE Arizona State University and has been interning with us this past semester. She is taking...
That's a U of A person that...
I was gonna say, that's not very nice. Hello?
Test, test.
Testing. Test?
We'll just take a, oh, let's see, that one's still working. And Kurt, maybe try the handheld mic. Does that work? That's why we're talking budget tonight, and maybe the council room will be part of that.
Testing? Oh. Okay, sounds like we're back. So you all got the THE Arizona State University thing? That's where I left off. Wanted to mention that Laura was, took part of our Native American Management Internship Program, which was great for her as well as the town of Gilbert. She's going to present on one of our department's wildly-important goals, which is to improve the current constituent inquiry system that we have in place. Laura spent one day with Intergovernmental Relations and spent the other day during the week with the Office of Management and Budget, and I think I can speak on behalf of Dawn that Laura did great work with us, for us, and we're really gonna miss her. She did a great job. This constituent inquiry system will be further improved even into next year, and the team that we have put together, we truly believe that this will be a best-in-class system that we have in place. So I'm happy now to introduce you to Laura.
Great, thank you, Kurt. Like you said, I was very fortunate to be a part of the wildly-important goal for Kurt Sharp and his mayor's office, which was really great because I got to experience the whole town within my short time here. And I'm really greatly pleased to say that the town of Gilbert has definitely installed in me some great ethics that I'm gonna carry forward in my whole entire life. So with that, I want to begin. A high-performing government, as we know, is very important to the town of Gilbert. And with that, Kurt Sharp and his team identified a problem with, which is that a constituent would email the entire Town Council, and the multiple council members will then contact the staff about the email. The follow-up plus the resolution was rather poor. That was before. Now, currently, Mayor Lewis will identify these all council emails, and the mayor's office will place them in a folder and later enter them into a constituent inquiry system. The issue with the current constituent inquiry system, I will now refer to as the system, is that these inquiries will be sent to the director, then the supervisor, and then the staff who would ultimately be answering them. This process was simply not efficient because in some cases it took too long to get back to the constituents. We did not want to get rid of the constituent inquiry system for two reasons. One, it's really great for tracking, and the second reason is it upholds one of Gilbert's values, which is accountability. So what did I do? What was my project in this whole scenario was I would meet with town leadership. I would identify the staff members who would be answering these questions. I then would compile frequently asked questions if there was any with the individual department or division. I then would ask the staff, how did they feel about the inquiry system? Was it working for them? Is there anything that we need to take care of? And then lastly, I would ask for any advice that they would, you know, like to give for this WIG to be more effective. I would then take this, my notes that I had with these meetings, I would take it back to Kurt Sharp. Kurt Sharp and I would then address these with our bi-weekly meetings. So what were the results? I met with 12 out of the 16 departments. We established bi-weekly meetings with IT and Communications, and we are currently increasing staff access to the system. We are close to completing a customized report that will be sent to Town Council on a periodic basis, which this will be one of the biggest milestones in this WIG. Once complete, council members will be able to see how these inquiries were handled. Out of these bi-weekly meetings, we came up with the objective for next year. The goal will be to integrate the town's website with the constituency inquiry system or the system. The constituents will answer a few short questions. This will narrow down the process so that the correct staff will be able to answer in a timely manner. In addition, we are also getting a software upgrade later this year. It is hopeful that we will be able to develop real-time notifications. This means email notifications will be sent when each inquiry is closed. It is also hopeful that the citizens will be able to track their inquiries. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor Lewis and council members.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Vice Mayor Cook?
Well, I do want to make a quick comment. First of all, Laura, thank you for leading the way for others in your community to follow your footsteps, and we look forward in the future to continue with that. Laura shared with me that her experience is that the town of Gilbert is the best municipality in the entire valley. So she says that she's gonna take our best practices, and it's going to lead her into becoming maybe the governor of the state of Arizona someday. So I said, well, good for you. So...
So the ambassadorship will continue? That's great. Thank you. Other comments or Councilmember Daniels?
I have a quick question about the system. I like that we just call it that now. When we, I've noticed that too. We'll get an email, we probably forward it to the same staff member, maybe we forward it to multiple staff members, then multiple staff members are working on it, and obviously that would create an issue. Is there any way for us to be able to enter a constituent inquiry? Because sometimes they don't always come through email. They might come through another channel. Maybe we get a phone call, but they may have called multiple council members to find something out. And so, is there any plans to have us be able to enter the constituent inquiry? Maybe Phase Two or Three?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Daniels, that's great feedback that I will take back to the team, and we've talked about it brilliantly. We're not quite sure how we'll go about that, but we totally understand that that would be something that you'd be interested in.
Patrick said he's not sure he trusts me to be able to enter.
The system is built on trust.
I'll totally throw you under the bus on that one.
Kurt, this would be a good question for you related. When we have had emails, and this is something that we've wanted as a service organization to make sure that we are responding timely and quickly, and not that we would give the same answers, but especially when it is maybe someone in a department area to answer the question that it's being followed up on. So I have felt very good when an email has come to all of us, and I send it to Kurt, it 100% gets taken care of. But sometimes I haven't followed up because we have that dilemma of not wanting to do or reply all and get into the twilight zone, if that's the way a council would respond to it. So Kurt, do you respond to the whole council to say, I've got this, we're following it? Or is that something that we need to do a better job of?
Mayor, council, that's a really good question, and that is the major milestone that we are just probably a week away from. As you probably know, all of the wildly-important goals have a by-win. Our by-win is the end of this fiscal year, but you will start seeing these customized reports very, very, very soon. And again, that is the part that we haven't done a great job of yet, but with these reports, once we decide on what's best for all of you as far as every month, every two weeks maybe, you'll see those reports, and you'll see how all those inquiries were handled.
Any suggestion, and you might be doing this, but when the email comes, let's say it came at four o'clock today, as soon as the meeting's over, we start to see it tonight, and it was addressed to the whole council. Is there some way for you to say to the whole council, it's in the system, and then we would know that you've got it and you're running with it?
Yes, that is part of the process, which you all should see within the next week or two.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Cooper?
Quick question, you know, and I appreciate all of the constituent emails that we get. Sometimes they're addressed individually to a council member, but the subject matter makes me think that probably others have received the same correspondence under separate cover. Is there any, is that, because it's really hard for me to know when I forward it on to a staff member to follow up, whether they're gonna get, you know, six additional emails just like that, or maybe they did, maybe I got to it a couple days after somebody else, and so they've already followed up on it. That's just a thing that actually happens to us all the time. Is there any thought given to that?
Mayor, Councilmember Cooper, that, I don't know the answer to that right now, but I do know that that happens, and you know, I'll certainly bring that with the other question to the team and see. I cannot answer that question. I don't know how we can identify that. But, you know, even if it just goes to the mayor, we will put those into the system as well, and if we can figure out a way to identify those that went to the rest of you, then we'll include that in the customized report. I have a form that was custom-built for me where I can check whether or not it's an all-council, so that way when we sort for the reporting purposes, we will be able to include those. So another good question, and we will take that back to the team.
And it might be for the short term because some, as we know, get sent to the mayor and not the whole council, and those are quickly sent to Kurt and put into the system that you, I think all seven of us could just send them to Kurt and a little note saying, please get it in the system, then we would know that it'll be put in and tracked, and if there are two or three, then we'll figure that out.
One, just to follow up, and this is more just for Laura to thank her, as Vice Mayor Cook did earlier. Appreciate it. What a neat thing it is to be able to come into an organization like this, learn some real-world problems that are faced by all public bodies, and have an opportunity to dig in and...
dig in and offer your support and your ideas, and so we really appreciate that. And I think it's a neat program that you're a part of, and I'm glad that the town also has this program. So, but very, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Mayor Cooper.
I think for all of us in the room, Laura, here comes a big round of applause. Thank you. We will now move to Agenda Item Number 2. This is requested from the council that Agenda Item 37 will be discussed as a separate item before we start to review the rest of the agenda items. Dawn, please. And for all seven of us, I realize that, well, some of you know this, but on Thursday night, it will just be five of us. And so especially the two council members that won't be here on Thursday night, we want to make sure that you are comfortable, and you have a chance today to ask some budget questions, and would have a good sense of any concerns that you also have that would be addressed. We start with Patrick. Thank you. As the overview, please.
Laura did such a great job, I'd like to ask her to come back up here and present the budget to you tonight. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to start our presentation off to you tonight by starting where we start on a regular basis as staff for this organization, for this community, delivering our services. As we build our budget and as we go about our daily duties, we look back to, and we are very focused on creating alignment within this organization, and that begins with our mission, vision, and values that have been established for us as a service organization, committed to enhancing the quality of life and in serving with integrity, trust, and respect, and having a vision of being best in class of all lines of service, and the values that we will embody in doing, carrying out our duties, our integrity, respect, accountability, innovation, learning, and communication. From there, we follow, we look to the strategic initiatives that have been adopted by yourself, our mayor, and our council, as, again, we go about our duties, and as we bring, build our budgets and bring them forward to you for consideration, we ensure that we have alignment with the strategic initiatives and the vision that you've laid out for our community as we bring things forward for you to consider for ongoing services and for new services that may develop through the years. For fiscal year 14, those six areas were community livability, technology leader, financial plan, infrastructure, economic development, and high-performing government. I won't go through each one of these major project initiatives or wildly important goals as we state them in the town, but these are the ones that were on our plates for this year that are in various stages of either being wrapped up, have been completed, or being wrapped up. And then for fiscal year 15, and these are those major categories that will be our wildly important goals going forward, and which other goals and responsibilities and projects will cascade down from, again, creating that alignment throughout all levels of our organization to make sure that we're following the vision and the strategic initiatives that you've laid out for us. So with that, I just wanted to begin our budget presentation to you tonight. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dawn Irvine, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget. She will walk you through the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, and thank you, Mr. Baner for the introduction. My name is actually Dawn Buckland, and I'm the Director of the Office of Management and Budget here for the town of Gilbert.
But when you started the budget...
When I started the budget, I was in fact...
And now it's wrapped up, so look what happens when you do a budget.
I'm just excited that I remembered today, so it is an interesting adjustment to make, but a fantastic one. As Patrick had mentioned, we started this year looking at what it was that, what it was that our mission, vision, and values embodied for the town, and the strategic initiatives that really defined the direction that we're going to accomplish those. As you saw, as you see here for FY '15 wildly important goals, these are the goals that are set before us to accomplish for the next year, and so that was really the catalyst for the budget discussion from early on, is how do we focus our efforts and our resources to make sure that we get there. To that end, we identify those key focus areas. Council, recall, we had those initial conversations last August, to make sure that as we undertook the budget process, that we were focused on achieving council's desires for this community. Again, going back to that mission, the vision, values, the strategic initiatives, and our wildly important goals for the next year. The department budget requests were formulated with this in mind, tying to those key focus areas specifically for next year to ensure that we're moving forward and making progress on those strategic initiatives. This was presented also to council last month, just taking a look at the sales tax, because when we look at our general fund, which is our day-to-day operations for local government, here in Arizona, and specifically here in the town of Gilbert, we are very much reliant upon our sales tax revenues. Really, our local sales tax alone makes up over 50% of the general fund, and then our state shared revenues, which are comprised of state shared sales tax and the income tax known as urban revenue sharing, make up another 32%. When you factor in the transfers that come in from some of our other funds to offset their share of the costs associated with internal services like human resources and IT, the remaining amount that attributable to fees for service, and fees and fines, is really a very small portion of that. I believe off the top of my head, it's less than 10%. So it's important that we continue to focus on sales taxes, we often do. But not just that we focus on sales tax, but that we really focus on the portion of sales tax that is sustainable in nature, and that we differentiate the amount that is what we would consider non-recurring. We may see it over a period of years, but it's not a sustainable level that will continue indefinitely into the future. And the primary source for this here locally is in construction sales tax and other construction-related revenues. So we wanted to highlight what we were seeing in that. Again, as we discussed last month, the sales tax, we're not actually seeing a decline in sales tax in 2014. These are just the reflection of the actuals collected through February, and then when we look just at actuals collected through February in each of the years, you see where we're trending this year compared to those other years. Again, when you look at that bottom, that bottom segment there, that construction sales tax, it is a very significant portion. We collected just under $8 million last fiscal year alone. So we want to make sure that we're applying that non-recurring revenue source towards non-recurring expenses, and the budget that's being presented to you today for consideration and for adoption on Thursday evening does just that. One of the items that we had looked at in the past was the FTE as it relates to the population changes across the years. Since fiscal year, between fiscal year 2010 to 2014, right now you're seeing on that chart how the percent changes from year to year relate to each other, but I can also, just for demonstration purposes, the change in population between 2010 and 2015 was about 12%. The change in FTE was about 3%. So that's how we've been relating in terms of how our FTE changes have followed population. Council's given us the directive to continue to maintain lean and efficient services. That's been our focus and our emphasis, and each and every year, that's one of the very beginning conversations that we have. We want to make sure that we can continue to provide services in an effective and efficient manner, that we're meeting the needs of the citizens, but that we're doing so in the most effective and efficient manner possible. So a quick overview of the budget of all funds. The very first number that you'll see there on the council communication, out of context, might raise a few eyebrows. We're looking at a budget of $554.7 million recommended for the next fiscal year, but I wanted to take just a moment to talk about what some of the primary drivers are in that change, because this does reflect an increase of $88 million from last fiscal year. Most of that is in the way that we're budgeting. We had, with just this last fiscal year, we changed the way that we looked at capital improvement fund budgeting, for example. So in prior years, we were doing basically a cash flow basis for the budget for our capital improvement program, what we actually intended to spend in any given fiscal year. As we put more system controls in place, making sure that we're, that we're actually tightening down our financial policies and adhering to them in every case, not just most of the time, but each and every time, we are adhering to our financial policies, and we're integrating system controls to make sure that we do that. As we, as we go to award contracts, then we need to make sure that we have the full legal authority in place to award that contract and encumber those funds. That's the primary difference that you see between the way we budgeted for capital improvement program last year on a cash flow basis, and now we actually budget for, and ask for the legal authority for the full contract amount, even if it's going to carry forward into the next fiscal year. As a result, you'll see that we have not only the new, the funding for the new projects for next year, or the new contracts for next year, and the full amount for the contracts totaling $77 million. You'll see that we're also carrying forward $80 million worth of CIP projects to be able to finish those contracts that were initiated this year. Any questions about that, the CIP? So the other large item or significant item that you'll see in there, and one of the first questions that typically comes up when we present a budget, is that the total request for all funds includes a request for an additional 10.85 full-time equivalent positions, or FTE. The numbers that you saw a moment ago reflecting the increase in FTE of 3% over the last five years, and that was including our request for 2015 compared to the 12% in the increase that we've seen in the population, reflect that request for the 10.85 positions. The total cost for that is $871,000. That includes not just the salaries and the benefits, but any type of contractual supplies that we, contractual services that would go along with those positions, any additional supplies, any type of vehicle maintenance that would go along. So that is the total ongoing cost for all of those positions. If we look specifically at the general fund, the recommended budget before you is for $150.9 million. That's a $12 million increase over the current fiscal year. Again, with the, with the way that we're budgeting for the capital improvement program, and the changes that we've made in the way that we're budgeting for the, for contingency, you can see that those two items alone make up $10 million of that $12 million overall increase. There are, within here, some of those changes. We had some one-time funding last year as well that has decreased because of the disaster, or I should say in the current fiscal year, because of the disaster recovery efforts in IT. Those are wrapping up now, so some of the one-time funding has decreased. The total ongoing request in the general fund is $3 million. And so within the general fund, as you saw a moment ago, the 10.85 FTE, 6.85 of those are requested within the general fund. One of those, as we discussed before, is taking an existing position that is a limited-term agreement and a current expense, but memorializing that as an ongoing commitment and an ongoing service for the town. The total of those, again, including all supplies and contractual, as well as, of course, the salaries and benefits, is $608,000. One of the items that would have been requested as we, as we move forward is to take a look at outstanding bonds as well. And so we'll talk just briefly about our bonds, and our debt service, and the property tax, and other revenue sources that address those. I wanted to note, though, in particular, and thank Laura Medina, you met her, you saw her just a moment ago. She also worked with, with the Office of Management and Budget in, in addressing some of our bonds, put together the slides that you see here before you today to help to take a look at where we've been historically, and then also where we'll be looking to go here into the future. So as you see here, a question that had come up before is how have we paid down the bonds over the last five years? And you can see that we have. But we wanted to show the full story, and you can see that as we were developing, then we issued some bonds to accommodate some of the capital needs that were needed in support of development that was occurring in, well, very, in very explosive growth that was occurring here in Gilbert. As we issued those bonds, you'll see those, those two areas where we peaked with those issuance, and then you can see over the last five years how we've made that concerted effort to pay those bonds down. Again, we have our annual debt service payments, and then as council knows, we've been looking for opportunities as those bonds become callable to pay them down even more rapidly, and there's an item on the, on the agenda on Thursday night that will also address that. So we wanted to take a quick minute, though, to begin, to talk a little bit more about the property tax. This is something that, starting with last year, we, we started addressing some of the changes in legislation. We, here in Gilbert, we have only a secondary property tax. Arizona has a bifurcated property tax system, a primary and secondary. Primary can be used for operations, secondary can only be used to retire debt, and here we have only a secondary property tax, and it is only used for debt service payments for bonds for large capital projects, major infrastructure for the community. That secondary property tax goes towards the repayment of those, those general obligation bonds. Now, last year, in, in 2013, the legislature adopted House Bill 2347, and the intent of that, as it was shared with me, was to ensure that, that cities and towns were not, were not saving or collecting property tax money for debt service and saving it over a period of years. But what it did by requiring us to, to collect the property tax and then remit it in the same fiscal year, it restricts us to collecting just exactly the amount that we need for the debt service payment in that particular year. Previously, we would have been able to collect funding in April for October payments, for example, and we can no longer do so. So what that means, and it also, we are also required by law now to adopt the levy rather than just simply a rate. So the conversation that you, you'll see in this presentation, as well as, as the item before you to consider for moving forward with the property tax levy adoption, addresses the levy. The levy itself is specifically addressing the debt service payment that is required for next year, as well as an allowance for delinquency. Not our delinquency, but should we not collect the property tax of a property owner, we still are required to make that debt service payment. So any questions regarding that? So with that, we had met with council last month regarding the specific requests in there. I have that information available. These are the same slides with, with a few minor updates based on the follow-up information that we had received. I can go through any of that detail as council would so desire.
I'm looking to my right and looking to my left for detailed questions. Councilmember Daniels?
I have, I do have a question on the, the bond issue. Specifically because I think that for a property owner, consistency matters, so that they can predict what their payment will be. Do you have any slides or anything that will show sort of what we forecast as far as, I guess it depends on what bonds we pay down?
It does, and so we had actually looked at a couple of options in terms of how to best present that. We can look at our existing debt service, for example, and, and highlight that last year we were at, at over $19 million, or the current fiscal year we were at over $19 million. This year, we're going, this coming year, we're coming down to 18.5. The following year, our debt service payment is up to $22 million, and you can see the, the potential volatility there that we're trying to address. Our, our projected debt service with our existing debt does level out better than that moving forward, but we, but one thing that we'll be looking to council for some additional conversation is whether we need to, one, look some of our existing needs for which voters have already authorized bonds, and begin addressing that, and that would change that future debt service, and then, two, whether we should begin planning for a fiscal year 2016 election to see if the voters would be, would want to pursue other capital improvement programs or projects such as those that might be identified in the Parks Master Plan. So that did make it a little bit difficult to be able to put that, put that type of imagery up. We'd have to make some assumptions there.
Staying within the law, is there any other way for us to provide consistency to voters as far as, I mean, I understand we're adopting a levy and not a rate, and is there any way for us to provide? Because we're also operating on a two-year lag time, right?
So in terms of the property tax collections, the value, the value is based on a two-year lag time. So sales from January of last year will be reflected then in the collections that we see next year. The values are based on that. That's why we're only now seeing an increase in our property, in our assessed value after, after the recession. So that's the lag time to which you speak. So we, we did, we did request within, with our bond council, some additional review on that. What type of options do we have? You know, we do have, the option is we have to have locked, we have to have our actual debt service payment for the next year is the maximum amount that we can collect for that, for that fiscal year. So, so the...
So if we collect more, let's say that we have a projected $22 million debt service payment, and we collect that much, but in the course of the year, we realize that one of our bonds is callable, and we'd like to pay it off early. Then we have more dollars essentially than what we projected, or what we projected to be our payment, and then what do we do?
We've, we have also, we have also asked them that question as well. This is very new for everyone, and they are really looking, looking to how it's going to roll out. The legal opinion that we got, and we have our attorney here who may want to weigh in as well, but the legal opinion that we got from the bond council was that the law is very specific, and it has to be for the debt service that is scheduled for that year. So it does make it, it does make it much more difficult for us to pay bonds down early now without actually going through a formal restructuring of the bonds, which has a lot of issuance costs and things like that along with it as well.
Whatever our bond council can provide as far as options to keep that... Whatever our bond council can provide as far as options to keep that payment level flat, I think that is where our constituency would find value. If my taxes are wrapped into my mortgage payment, and if my mortgage payment is consistently changing, be it substantial or not, depending on the value of your home two years ago, I would have, I would have concerns about that.
We've voiced similar concerns as well, and we've asked them to look at those types of scenarios, knowing the interest of making it as easy as possible for the homeowner that is going to be paying it. The intent of the law was to protect the taxpayer. We're trying to work through some, perhaps some unintended consequences. And so, we are asking those questions. We'll continue to have those conversations. Right now, they haven't had a lot of options for us.
Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I have the same concern with it. And in fact, this year, this is one of those interesting things about taxes. When people talk about whether or not they raise taxes or not, you can either look at the tax rate or the total levy or the total amount collected. Even for this year, what's being proposed, at least as a total levy, would be an increase. And I don't like that either. So, I understand that there is about $1 million in there for contingency. It's 5%. And so, that puts us at 19.5, if I'm getting my number right. So, if we cut our contingency down to by, let's see, half a million dollars, we'd be at 19. Then, we would not have to raise the total levy either. And we could use fund balance if we needed to cover the rest of that contingency. So, this is the interesting thing. I agree, I don't want their taxes to go up. They're paying taxes in the form of sales taxes. We've got enough money, I think we can afford to keep from raising their total taxes. I think we ought to not raise their total taxes. Let's use other taxes they've paid to keep their property tax bill level, just like you're suggesting. I think you're right. We ought to keep it level. That's important. And they're paying taxes other ways, let's use that to keep their property tax stable. So, I think there's a way to do this and accomplish what you're asking, so.
Thank you.
I think my biggest question for that is if it would be sustainable long-term, because this doesn't sound, I mean, if it's fluctuating year to year, if we do go out for new bonds in order to pay for capital expenses at some point down the road, I'm not saying 2016 or 2020, how do we provide consistency to the voter if our reserve balance or if there's not a... I love the idea that we only collect for the year. I think that's, I think that's consistent with my values, but it doesn't make sense, essentially, in the long run, to not be able to plan accordingly. And that, to me, is, the long-term planning, I think, is a bigger deal. And so, maybe next year, we could use fund balance, but is that really sustainable? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. And I would hesitate to walk down that road, not knowing if it was a sustainable practice.
Patrick, do you want to make a comment before I go to Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I was just going to add, we do have a lot of questions. It's brand-new. We've got to understand some of the things that Dawn had mentioned to us. To answer Councilmember Daniels' question, I don't believe that it is sustainable. And I believe this really, we're looking at an either-or type of situation. It's not possible, given the need to issue additional debt for the various needs the community has, and also maintain a level predictable amount of debt service for our residents year in and year out. We wouldn't have the fund balance, even if we had fund balance to do that in a short-term scenario. We certainly wouldn't have it in a long-term scenario. So, I think the way that the state law has been structured now, it's inevitable that we will see those peaks and valleys with that debt service and how it impacts our residents. But we'll continue to ask questions and evaluate options, but I don't, I don't see many options at this point.
Councilmember Taylor?
Well, and I had some similar thoughts. And Dawn, the chart that you sent earlier today was really very helpful, because we see, you know, an uptick this year and then the bigger one next year, but then it's fairly flat between 2017 and 2023. And I can send this around, or maybe you just want to send it to people. So, that looks fairly stable. Now, I recognize what you're saying, is there may be something from the community with the Parks Master Plan or other infrastructure needs that would definitely make that variable. But to me, in terms of consistency, I'm definitely agreeing with Councilmember Peterson and Daniels on that. And for the most part, that looks fairly flat, except for these first two years.
It's going to hang off, then how do we do it?
Yeah, yeah. Which one's callable? And that's why I asked you, what's the call dates and break these out? How many bonds are we actually looking at here? Recognize the variability, but the total looks fairly flat, which I think we can get to that if, you know, if we look hard enough, I think, yeah.
Which, one of the agenda items, which we'll get to in a few minutes, is to redeem a bond early to save money. And so, that's part of, are there some that you're foreseeing that would be on a schedule that we could anticipate? And so, great questions, and Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, that was, Councilmember Taylor did a good job summing up my thoughts on that, is to look at the, you know, look out there in future years with debt service obligation in those years. I think we have 19 million we can collect total without raising it, all right? So, if there are a couple of years that pop up above that, I think we can get through that and be sustainable, because it'll pop down below that again. And then, after that, if the voters speak and want to issue more debt and they want to vote that in, well, then that's a different story. They've spoken on that issue, and, you know, they'll get the property taxes that come with it. But until, I just see, the folks don't want more, any tax increases right now. This is not where they're at. And we've collected their taxes some other way to help prevent their property taxes going up. I think we use it, so.
So, Patrick, if, and I appreciate your comment about not being sustainable, but if the strategy became to have what the debt service is, have a plan in place so that maybe it does fluctuate each year, but have a plan in place to cover that, does that, is that what we're hearing, and is that something that would make sense?
Mayor, members of the council, for the upcoming year, I think it would be well worth our time to understand what we foresee in the near future. We've got some additional debt issuances that will be necessary to continue out with the public infrastructure for the build-out of Southern Gilbert. We've also got anticipated, and it's a separate subject, but potential expansions or planned expansions of our water and wastewater plants. So, we're also wrapping up our long-range infrastructure plan. That'll give us a better handle of what our costs are going to be going forward to maintain our current infrastructure. We're not sure yet when those peak years will occur and if those will need to be debt issuances to address some of the things that we uncover. But it's certainly something we can look at next year. But my point being that I don't think there's a sustainable game plan that can come up to always ensure our residents have a level debt service amount while we will continue to issue debt service, or I'm sorry, debt to build our infrastructure in a growing community like Gilbert's.
With this dialogue, and it may be, as you said, you want a little more time to study it, would you think that would be retreat topic? Or is that something that would be sooner? Or is that too soon in August?
I think we could certainly talk about it at the retreat, but next year, I think it would be, and I lean on Dawn to chime in with this, but I think we'd need a little bit more time than that to understand what are, what we foresee in the near future for debt issuances based on capital projects.
So, as the council, if we proceeded, realizing this is a preliminary budget we're talking about, and it may not change between now and June, but if we proceeded with this proposed strategy, knowing that we may want to change it, we'd have this discussion and be able to make that change then. But I, Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor, listen, I think we can all, we can discuss anything. I mean, we have doors wide open on that. But we did go through a downturn, a significant downturn, and because of the way that those secondary property taxes were collected, we did not have to raise the rate on any of our citizens. We've kept it at $1.15 for nine years, I think now. I mean, it's 10. We've been able to do that even when assessed values dropped, even when we predicted or knew that assessed values had dropped and we were functioning, you know, two years previously, essentially, trying to make up that difference. We were able to maintain that $1.15. If our new policy as a community is to utilize fund balance or contingency in order to pay debt, I do not think that is both sustainable and responsible to do that when we recognize that we may or may not be able to make that a consistent practice. And our job is to make responsible, consistent practices, policies for our citizens, and that is an important element of what we do. I don't see, and again, we can talk about it, and yeah, you're right, maybe we could do it for one year, but is that really the most responsible use of our general fund balance? Is that really the most responsible use of the sales tax dollars, the construction tax dollars, all those dollars that come into the town? Is that really the most responsible use of that? And again, we can talk about it, but I feel like, in some ways, that's trying to make up the difference for a law that has some unintended consequences. And really, that's, our job is to do what we can for our residents and...
Sure. Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah, my thoughts are along those same lines. I mean, using fund balance, as I've been thinking about it, we've been asking questions for a few years, you know, what is, what is this organization, the services that we want to provide, that the community wants us to provide over the, when we reach build-out? What is that going to cost? And what is the revenue picture going to look like, given our current configuration of revenues? We haven't received that satisfactory answer yet. So, I think taking money that may be necessary or needed, and even creating policies that might make that, you know, make it difficult to make and eat meat down the road is probably not a wise strategy. It might even be a bit risky. And so, the prudent thing to do, clearly, we should look for whatever, you know, we can look at these kinds of things, but I think the prudent thing to do is, until we have all the answers, we don't start saying things like, "We've got plenty of money," because we don't know if we have plenty of money. And we really don't know what the answers are. We don't know what the revenue picture, the portfolio of revenues that we're going to need down the road looks like either. And so, I think it's premature to start doing that kind of thing, and it kind of sounds political to me, and I'm not, I'd rather be prudent and look long-term.
Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor. One more thing, a message that I think is very important for the community and the council, as well as we consider this issue, is when we talk about the levy for next year, and Councilmember Peterson pointed out that would increase slightly over the current fiscal year, but that's also accounting for a lot of the growth that's occurred in this last year. So, it's that new growth coming on in the community and now starting to pay the property taxes that they hadn't paid before. The average homeowner here in the town of Gilbert, the average property owner in the town of Gilbert will see a decrease in their property taxes next year as a result of this. What we were concerned about is that decrease and then increase and then decrease again, and that's the consistency there. What we also want to make sure that the residents understand, or that our community understands, is that we're talking specifically about the town's portion, which is about 11% of every property tax dollar that's collected, 11% to 12%. So, we're only talking about that portion of the property tax bill. Right now, a home, for example, that would, that may have sold for $250,000, the annual property tax bill for fiscal year 14 for the town of Gilbert would be about $235. That same resident next year would pay about $215 for the entire, for the annual, under the proposed or recommended budget in property tax levy.
That's helpful. And listening to that, and listening to the comments, because we would like to see lower taxes, it would seem like we would go forward and wait for further information before we would do a major policy shift. Is that, is that consistent with the feedback from the council?
Mayor, I wasn't suggesting a policy per se. I just was suggesting, for the few years that popped above the 19 million, we could handle them separately. I do think it would be unsustainable to try and fund everything, capital improvement, at least under our current constraints of our budget and how things are working, with the sales tax. We've got a lot of work to do to be able to do something like that. That would be a wonderful dream, but I'm not suggesting that for all future things, we would use sales tax. I'm just saying, the voters haven't approved any debt for a very, very long time. And to get through a few years that pop up above that 19 million is to stay, it's doable. The only way we need more money for debt service is if the voters vote in more debt. If they speak and do that, that's, that's fine, you know? That can happen. But I'm just saying, there's a way to look at this. I agree, we want to do things that are prudent and sustainable. I think that my plan would be the way that I'm proposing it, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
Any other comments? All right, with that feedback, any other discussion or questions you'd like to ask on this particular item before we move on? Patrick?
Mayor, members of the council, I was just asking Dawn for some clarification. We do have $50 million in voter authorized bonds that have not been issued for capital projects in 2008, which will be necessary, I think we're anticipating in the following fiscal year. That is not incorporated into that forecast right now. So, you know, it's one of those variables we're talking about. I think our preference would be, let's discuss this and let's look at it hard in the upcoming fiscal year, and then we'll have more information at our fingertips to make a good decision. We do try to evaluate every opportunity to refund debt and save on interest costs, as we'll be doing Thursday night with that $12 million bond issuance, but we just don't have enough of the answers and enough of the detail right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
And I appreciate that, but it's difficult to make some of these bigger decisions, you know, and in the absence of that, and, you know, we jumped to conclusions that we don't have enough money to pay for this, but by the same logic, well, maybe we do if we had the right information. So, I appreciate, I know you're working double time on that, so I appreciate the information so we can, you know, make the best decision on that. And so, thanks for what your team's doing on that, Patrick.
Thank you. Now, Dawn, you're done with the presentation part, just looking for additional questions. So, let me see if, Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to go quickly through a little chart I put together. I know everyone loves my charts, right? Okay, maybe I'm the only one. If you can put it up there, Dawn, that'd be great. I will do it very, very quickly, as quickly as I possibly can. The proposed budget, okay? The proposed budget still reflects a decreased efficiency for most years past. Let me explain that. Even controlling for inflation and population increase, Gilbert citizens are getting less for their dollars. That's, that's what I see. Now, these statements assume the levels of service have remained basically the same, and I'll admit, I don't have specific data on that, but I'm going to guess if we went back to the service, citizen surveys of satisfaction, we're going to see pretty constant. And high, there are high rates of satisfaction from our citizens, so I don't think that's really changed in any significant way over the years. So, bottom line is, while the level of service remains the same, the cost of providing it has increased significantly, which means the citizens are getting less value for the dollars. So, the charts, I don't know how much detail you want. I could explain everything in full detail, but the bottom line is, all the numbers that I have here, with exception of the red line, all of the numbers are exactly from staff, the population numbers I used, the budget numbers I used, the actual costs I used, and even the inflation rates I used are all from staff. So, you know, we agree on the data as far as that goes. Now, how we handle inflation, I don't know, but the bottom line of what this chart is saying, you'll see the red line there, that's the what-if scenario. If we were to keep our spending per citizen basically equal in real terms, in other words, controlling for inflation. Now, you have to decide which value to start off of to do that. But what I did was, I just adjusted that value until it kind of fit in with other years that seemed to trend along the line of inflation. And so, there is a bubble there that doesn't trend that way, and I think that's more of an outlier than, than a good trend. So, I, that's the way I did it. It's fair to say, you could put that inflationary line up and down the chart, however you want, but I don't think that would be a best fit to the data. Anyway, the bottom line is, you'll see the actuals are the blue line, and they end with fiscal year 13. Here's, I have some good news. If you look at this chart, the distance between the gray line and the blue line tells us how much more closely we are between what we budget and what we actually spend. If you'll remember, in April of 2010, I came to this council and said, "Hey, you guys have a lot of padding in your budget. You're budgeting for way more than you're actually going to need." And so, that distance between the gray line and blue line illustrates that. What's really neat here is after that, we've come together, if you look at fiscal year 12 and 13, all three lines are together, which is kind of cool. And so, we're budgeting more realistically. We have less padding, at least based on what I'm seeing, so we've made progress. The concern is the last two years, fiscal year 14 and 15, and we're just a lot higher than I think where we should be based on the other trends of the past. And I remain concerned about that. I guess you could say, "Look, that gray line got a little closer to the red line this year." You could say that. Maybe that's some kind of improvement. I just think that we can still do better. I think, as I've said... I think, as I've said, as we grow in size, we should be able to get more value for our dollar, for our citizens, with economies of scale and not the other way around. That's really what this chart is about. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but I just want to put that out there, put it early on in the discussion for the budget. I know we're just doing preliminary now, but if we want to continue this discussion in the final, fine, I just wanted to get it out there.
Mayor?
Please.
And Councilmember Peterson, please, perhaps we can, we can tag team on this as well. Councilmember Peterson was kind enough, actually, to spend a great deal of time with staff over the last couple of days, to make sure that we could understand the numbers that we were looking at. We too were looking at a similar type of analysis and coming at it from a different way. Councilmember Peterson, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but as you explained to me, the inflation, the changes in inflation that you, that you have here was based on determining, was it 2002? So it was, it was a year that you felt was the lowest possible...
It could be 11, that's where they match, but yeah.
So, so starting with that, and then basing the inflation forward on that, so we had looked and agreed to share another depiction of that as well. Because he was looking at 10-year, because we were looking at since 2001, we went back basically to 2000 and looked at what the budget was, the ongoing budget was in the year 2000, looked at the inflation rate as of that time, and then we plotted that same line that you see there on the inflation over that period of time since then, so that we would see if all things remained equal as of exactly that date, and we increased it just by population inflation. And I think it was just the starting date that was our, our difference in that. The reason I'm highlighting that here is because, as I switch over here, we wanted to highlight just the ending few years. Depending on how you look at that, it may or may not, okay. Depending on, so as you look at the inflation that's occurred over those years, and this again, now is just looking at that five-year period of time, when we, when we mapped out since the year 2000 what the inflation rate was, and you see that inflation adjusted number there, you can see that the budgeted amount is actually much, much closer than it has been in years past, so we're really starting to, to close that gap. And that's, that's even after reflecting the class and comp adjustment that you see there, that brought us to the 497.
Mayor, this is the one, I'm not sure we're quite on the same page yet, because as I looked at the formulas you sent me, the way you were calculating was always based on the previous year's expenditures. So if that's the way that was calculated, it's really not doing the same thing that my number is doing. So I'm not sure what function it serves at that level, but I mean, that was the one, maybe we have disagreements on still, but that's why the graphs don't quite look the same.
Vice Mayor Cook?
And again, just to confirm, that, of course, last year, we decided to agree that we would do a $12 million adjustment to the team as it relates to the class and comp study. If that number would have been projected, you know, prior years, let's say if we adopted that philosophy, you know, 10 years ago and continued that, that would, that line would have probably been pretty flat, in my mind, in a lot of ways. Would that be true? If we took the class and comp and adopted that philosophy from previous years, we wouldn't necessarily have seen that spike, it would have been pretty constant.
That would certainly be, that was certainly an adjustment to policy and to the level of service, and that would have reflected over whatever period of time that had occurred.
Absolutely, thank you.
This analysis is very helpful, and I look at that too, and I realize it would take some study time to merge all that together, and so thank you for presenting this, and please?
All right, thank you for one last comment. Go back to my slide real quick. I'll just point this out, and if we need to update the website, I think we do, because if you'll see fiscal year 13 of my dots, that is pretty close to what we're advertising as our ongoing costs per, per citizen. So, with where we are up there, it, beyond the 490 per citizen, we're close, we're putting like, I think it's 466 per citizens, the metric we're showing on the website. So if we're not going to stick with that, I think we need to update it. And that's really where I was hoping to stay with, I was so excited about that metric, but it looks like we're departing from it.
I look at this too, as many different ways to do a budget, and often it's helpful to go different directions, and this would be the type of analysis to say, this is what, even before you start, what you want the budget to be. And sometimes in households and families, that's the direction you go, is we've only got so much money. And so I think this approach that you've taken, Dawn, with the team and meeting with all the departments, the zero-based approach, you've come back to say, "This is what we need, we have the revenue for it, we're not," and I realize the discussion we just had, there can be a discrepancy in saying there are no new taxes, but it's also matching non-recurring revenues with non-recurring expenses, so that, so that's a fit. I saw the utility rates, and that's another item that's on the agenda, would not be increased. So there's, there's a lot of positive things, but this is also another way to look at it, to say, are there ways that we could still have this number and make it make sense? So that might be a question of the council for a minute, as you've looked at the total, total budget that's been presented, are there any specific items that you would say, "Don't make sense," or on a preliminary basis, on Thursday night, would be, be ready to at least, I mean, to, yes, take other ways to analyze it, but in general, are we, do we have any concerns about specific items that need to be presented today? Councilmember Taylor?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Similar to last year, in terms of the new proposed headcount, you know, my thought on that is, I certainly support the public safety and some of the public works, proposed positions, but the things that really truly aren't customer-facing or value, direct value-added to our citizens, those are the kind that I'm, I'm challenging. So, in the spreadsheet that we've all received, you know, the long-term agreement ones are things that I'm questioning, there's about 270,000, I think, if my memory serves right. The, there's, there's some HR, there's some digital communications, and, you know, part, just tying it back to this, you know, when we look at this, this chart, there's a couple of things that I like. It's really the value to the citizens, and are we really getting, are the citizens really getting more value out of this budget? I think in some ways, there's, you know, some of the headcount with the Civil Patrol, I really liked that, the creative idea. But the other ones, I don't see that, but I do see that it's giving less, you know, it's more government for the citizens, and I don't really think that that's serving them the best, but I support, you know, the other ones. So those are the ones, if you talk about specifics, that I'm looking at, and I'll have more to say, but just in general, that's a summary.
And it's not that I don't want to get into the specifics now, some of those items, and Dawn, tell me if I'm seeing this properly, from prior years, we've done a preliminary budget that's led to the final budget, and I anticipate again this year, that we will be below, our actual will be, will be below what was budgeted.
Absolutely.
And that's good, and I think our citizens appreciate that. Some of the details that Councilmember Taylor would bring up, we would get a chance on many of those items to have as an agenda item, to put up or down, is that correct? Not all of them, but many of them.
Mayor, that's absolutely correct. As a matter of fact, the preliminary adoption that we're asking council to approve on Thursday evening, sets the, what they call the maximum appropriation for next year. It's a legal limitation for spending. And so after that time, you could not increase that level, but you could, you can work within it in any way you so chose. Additionally, any of the items requiring contracts over $100,000, capital improvement projects, those types of things, would be coming back before council on a case-by-case basis for approval as well.
This is not to sound like I'm lobbying, I think this is my sixth iteration where I've realized that there's a budget, it's a plan. Each of the last six years, we've been less, which is good, and the details we do need to talk about, and so it's either a question of, do we talk about it now, or does it come up sometime in the next 12 months, and then we do get a chance to say it makes sense or it doesn't. Some of the items may make sense to talk about now, I'm not sure, or if it is just doing that maximum figure, and we still have opportunities to talk about it, that's kind of maybe my question today to the council, are there, some of those items, you know, I'll start with Councilmember Taylor, should we talk about them now, or is it, knowing that we will get a chance to talk about them, and we'll have more discussion and more input, are you okay at a preliminary basis to have this figure?
The second proposal, I'm fairly comfortable with, but what I want to add to that discussion is similar to what we had last year, is to give you a real number, so that we can set a top line, and then, and substantiate that, and I don't have that today, but I would like to do that, so that we, you know, could work towards that.
Sure. And for the public, on a nice note, we have, as the council had a couple of weeks, meeting with the budget team to look at this and start to get a fill for it, it is a lot, and therefore, sometimes it's hard immediately to say, you know, take this out or add this. It is nice, and I appreciate it, and I want to give this compliment, that again, as you started out with one of your first or second slides, and also in the council communication, there are policies that the council have provided to town leadership, and you've added those, and that's been a good reminder that this is what has been your driver, in addition to the mission, and the vision, and the strategic initiatives, that these policies that at a high level have been set by the council, and therefore they have been the drivers. And I don't mean, I need to say this in a positive light for Dawn, but she has been a bulldog with town staff, and they have noted that she's representing the council well, and questioning, and saying, "Are you sure you need that?" and having many iterations, and so that's, that's a good thing, and we've appreciated that on behalf of the council. And so, I get back to, for tonight, what I'm hearing is, we may be fine with those preliminary numbers, there could be some more discussion. If it doesn't happen in the next week, if it doesn't happen in June when we do the final budget, we still have an opportunity to have a lot of detailed discussion about many of these items. So for, Councilmember Cooper?
Yes, I mean, I agree. The one comment I would make, something that I think might be missing, if you will, and it's not that we would include it now at this point, because I think some work would need to be done on it, but we've talked in the past about the aging of the northern part of Gilbert, and while we are very focused and excited about the growth that South Gilbert is receiving, and we are very cognizant of the needs that South Gilbert has in order to, if you will, catch up to the assets and amenities that North Gilbert has, we can't take our eye off the ball as it relates to the future for North Gilbert. And when I'm, I'm really talking about the whole redevelopment effort that may be necessary, or will be necessary in the future, as we look at needs that are multiple, they're across all disciplines at the town. They are, you know, they, they present themselves probably first and foremost in economic development, but you go from there, you look at parks, you look at right-of-ways, you look at infrastructure that's underneath the ground, you look at police and fire, there's, there is a, a need for us as leaders of the community to begin looking down the road at issues that we'll confront, and are already beginning to confront, the northern and older areas of Gilbert. And so while this is a little late in this process, if you will, to budget any monies, because I'm not even sure exactly what we're talking about when I talk about a strategic redevelopment plan, I would encourage, maybe even by the retreat, that, that we get, we have some conversation about what that might look like for the future, because we want to do it right, we don't want to get behind, as some of our neighboring communities have found out, it's a lot more expensive to try to retrofit, come back in and, and head off challenges, or actually bring, roll them back than it might be to head them off. And so I would, and this is really, because it is across all departments of the town, I think it's probably a town manager's office kind of thing to at least get the conversation going, but I would throw that out there, as something I didn't see in here, and maybe we haven't talked about it enough, but I want to talk about it more, and I think it's the prudent thing for us to do as we go forward, and so, that's just a recommendation. I was, I will note that I am very happy to see that there is a redevelopment plan funding in here for the redevelopment area itself in downtown Gilbert, I'm not ignoring that, I think that's terrific, especially given the investment we have in that area, and the goals that we have in that area, and the way things have changed since the last time we really looked at it, that's a thumbs up for me, we need to have that conversation. But I'm talking about taking it bigger.
Thank you. For the study session, does that give us a good, big-picture overview and ready to move on? Okay, thank you. The last part of our study session is to, in preparation for Thursday night, see if there are agenda items, we wanted to have additional dialogue right now. Let me start with Councilmember Peterson, do you have some items?
Sorry to have so many, but I do. Seven, 17, 18, 20, and 30 and 31, I guess that's public hearings, we don't have to do that, but I just had a quick question on that, I don't need to ask that one, let's scratch that, it's fine.
We'll see how we do on time. Councilmember A, Councilmember Taylor? Councilmember Daniels? Councilmember Cooper? Okay. Couple of the items that you brought up, I had on my list, so let's go with that. My understanding on seven, to town manager manager, is that that is being polled, is that right?
Yes, that is being polled, we will not be bringing that back forward.
Let's move on to the next one.
Mayor, so...
Seventeen?
Yes. Detention facility on this, shared detention facility with Chandler. It's not a lot of questions, it's just one basic point, and if they want to pull up the presentation to make it clear, we could, but in the analysis, the direct savings versus the expenditures, we were actually, if you just use direct savings, we were, as an ongoing, a little bit in the red on that. But when they included the overtime savings of the officers, we were clearly in the black. And so I'm supportive of it, but there's a caveat, I've been taught it's best practice if you have efficiencies like that, and you expect to really achieve them, you need to somehow back them out of the budget somewhere, or else they evaporate. That's what I've been taught. So I'm just wondering, how can we put our, you know, finger on how we're going to make those savings? Is there a way to do it? Because I sure like to see that. As far as the overtime savings, the direct ones are going to happen, I mean, you just, obviously, but...
Real quickly before, Mayor, Councilman Peterson, one of the things, as well as efficiencies, is keeping our officers on the streets, so that they have much lower commute times to and from the Fourth Avenue jail, so they'll have more time on our streets, because the holding cell will be right here.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Peterson. While we do not have the presentation with us today, we can certainly make that available. There were presentations given in two prior meetings here to the council. A couple of items were outlined there in terms of actual savings, and reflected within the budget for, that's proposed before you on Thursday evening as well. For example, we did actually reduce the fuel budget by $11,000 to reflect some of those trip, trip reductions. Additionally, one of the primary focus areas was our ability to reduce the need for additional officers by being able to keep our current officers on the streets, rather than sending them back and forth on so many trips.
And that's where we had overtime savings calculated, I think, in the presentation, and I'm just asking, did we take the overtime budget for PD and decrease it by that amount? That's really my question.
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, when we look at the budget, we're, we looked at the budget as a whole, and all of the needs that were incorporated therein, that included the additional overtime needs that would have been driven by the prior business practices. So the total overtime next year reflects the, the police department's overtime needs as an entire department net of these changes as well.
I'll talk with you more about it after, I'm just trying to be able to put my finger on how those numbers came out, thanks.
Councilmember Daniels?
I do have a suggestion on this item, only because I've gotten a couple of comments from residents saying, "Why are you guys putting a jail in Gilbert?" And so I've tried to, in a small way, with a couple of people, explain that it's a detention center. I do think we should probably do some community outreach, and really let people know exactly what it is that we're doing. I don't know if we can, after the construction is done, we can sort of have, I always give jobs to the communications team. jobs to the communications team, but maybe create something that would allow us to share with the community that this isn't a jail, that the people would be here anyway to go to court, we're just saving really officer time and energy. And so some type of community outreach, I think, would be beneficial, particularly after this vote.
Our communications team and Parker, Parker, you missed that. Got it. Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Peterson, for right now, and I do remember we had two presentations, a lot of good dialogue, you'll do that offline.
And Mayor, I may be able to clarify, I took an awful lot of time to simply say that we reallocated the hours to reflect the current, the business needs for next fiscal year.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, 18.
This is a really simple question and I think the answer is yes, but I just want to clarify. On the CNG, I got an ROI analysis, thank you for the work on that. I just want to be clear that the cost of compressing the gas, because I know we're buying the gas from Southwest Gas and we're getting a screaming rate on it because it's uncompressed at that point, and there is a cost to compress it.
Is that 19?
Is that 19?
Okay. So Edgar, 19.
Embarrassing, sorry. But does the cost of compressing the gas, is that totally included in all of our, in our analysis?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson, yes, it is. It is included in that, in that analysis.
That's all I had, Mayor. I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. The talent management system.
Mayor, I'm just going to present my question, so I don't want to waste time if they don't need to present more, but as I've listened to the reason for this expenditure, I've heard a lot of things that will help us improve our performance, things like goal setting, measurable outcomes, and then follow-up for those, for those goals, for accountability purposes, for, you know, the four disciplines of execution suggest a cadence of accountability. These are all good things, but I'm wondering how we can apply this same idea of measurable outcomes and accountability to this very expenditure. My point is, if we're successful in improving our performance through this expenditure, we should be able to see some kind of a, hopefully saving something for the taxpayer. The taxpayers should, they're being asked to pay a lot more, not only in the short term, but ongoing for this. My question is, what can we commit to them that they're going to get in exchange?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We had an opportunity to talk earlier to Councilmember Peterson, too, in terms of ROIs. And as we look to moving forward, setting the organization to the last phase of build-out, this, this tool, the talent management system, is a tool that we will be able to manage the human capital, one of our greatest assets of the town, in a more efficient and effective way to maintain a lean and efficient organization. And so we are looking at ways that we can define metrics going into implementation as, as we roll out the system if approved on Thursday.
Please.
Mayor, that's really my concern. I agree, I think all these principles we're talking about applying should produce performance enhancement, more efficiency. You mentioned the word efficiency. I'm just saying, I don't see us committing to that anywhere in our numbers. I'm still concerned about our, our budget. I'm concerned about sustainability, Patrick brought this up. Our, what we're trying to do and be sustainable at build-out without any new taxes, anything like that, is a lofty goal. So we have to get every ounce of performance out of everyone, I totally agree with that, but we have to commit to it as well or else it's not, those efficiencies will evaporate if we don't commit to them. We have to do that. So I just, I don't see any numbers that are saying, here's how much we're going to save and this is how I can prove to you that we've actually saved them. I want to see that if we're going to make this kind of expenditure.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, as I, and I appreciate some of the presentations that I was given on this twice, and, you know, I've got about five to 10 years of experience implementing systems exactly like this in, you know, global corporations, multi-language. And, you know, Councilmember Peterson's right on, you know, when you, when you propose something that's this expensive and it's going to increase the, you know, the licensing costs and some other costs, you better see some offsetting costs or else the proposal doesn't go very far. And, you know, that's really what the private sector does every day. So to me, I think we're really premature on this because it doesn't have the level of rigor that, that I've seen, that, that I would expect in a high-performing organization. It's really just raising our costs and not showing real return to our citizens on this. I don't disagree that we need, we need some more of the tools in the organization, but one of the specific things that I think, you know, Patrick and others, Patrick on your team are going to be challenged is, there's not a real good data extraction plan on this. I know there's bits and pieces of it and you'll have discrete systems there, but you're still going to be challenged to try to run enterprise-wide data and get really good enterprise data. People are going to be running around and, you know, merging different tables and things like that. And I think with a little bit more work, we could do something that's better, not only for the taxpayers, but also for the enterprise itself. So a couple of thoughts there.
Councilmember Daniels.
Just a question for Councilmember Taylor. Are you, are you suggesting a different type of software or are you suggesting a different type of system? I'm not totally sure if, if this, and granted, I haven't seen the presentation yet, but if this isn't the right solution and if that, that team has decided that this is the right solution for them, are we offering an alternative or are you just saying, go back and do some more research?
I'm saying the latter, but I'm happy to be helpful on that. I've been given two presentations on PowerPoint, I wasn't part of the RFPs, I haven't done the analysis of the suppliers and the opportunity, happy to provide some expertise, you know, having some and implementing systems on that, but that's what I'm saying is.
So you do agree that there's a system needed, but just not this system?
Right.
Okay.
And it could be this, if it's integrated a little bit better, they're basically taking a bunch of systems, cobbling it down into two systems, and that integration isn't as smooth as I, I think it, I think Patrick needs really to run a good enterprise, plus the overall operating costs of the systems are still higher without the return.
When I was giving the presentation, the poor presenters had to go back and listen to my history stories of implementing about eight payroll systems. And, you know, thank you for listening. I think the, to Councilmember Peterson, I do feel the commitment of our town leadership on performance management and don't know the level of detail because I did not get involved in the software comparison and did have a chance with some of the talent management systems in the last few years to see some of the products are coming out. I guess my support was coming from, you're, right now, you're doing a lot of things manually. And so automation with that commitment, I think, will help. Whether it's the right system, I probably won't get into that level of detail. And I don't know if, if we, depending on how the council feels, if it did get approved, I would still welcome a more detailed conversation with Councilmember Taylor because of some of your expertise. And if you're seeing some things, it's not the right software system, would love to have that discussion and, and maybe the funds are authorized and then we still have an option before we would sign a contract with a particular vendor. But I, I do see that we're doing a lot of things manually and the automation will be a big help. And so I support that, whether it's the right system. I can only tell you stories of the past. And we're trying to get to the future, so that didn't really help, but that's what they heard. So any, would that be something, certainly by Thursday is not realistic to have those detailed discussions, but if we did approve it on Thursday, is there still some time before we could sign a contract where you could have some dialogue with Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, we can make that work. It would have an impact on the performance management implementation timeline, but we can, we can work with that.
And I don't know if it's going to be approved on Thursday and I'm just, if it did, I'd still like to have that dialogue, okay? Thank you. Anything else on that topic?
Mayor, if I could say just a few words on that topic, we've had some dialogue, I haven't had as much dialogue directly with Councilman Table and others as Carrie and Mark and others on our team have. First and foremost, I agree, Councilman Peterson, we are trying very hard to always find metrics for everything we do to prove the value to the greatest extent we can to our residents so they can, it's clear in their minds, you know, that the decisions we're making and the steps we're taking are in their best interest. Some projects lend themselves more easily to that and that return on investment than others. When I look at this system, when I first started in this community and with this organization, you asked me to come up with a succession plan for the organization because we really didn't have one. Like many organizations, we've got a lot of baby boomer personnel that are nearing retirement age and we better understand for an organization of 1,200 employees, who is eligible for retirement and when and what is going to be our plan for if not backfilling those positions with existing personnel, someone who can hold the wheel while we go out and do job searches. And for some of those positions, it can be quite a time-intensive and expensive process, not only the recruitment, but sometimes the overtime that comes as a result of, of other employees having to cover those hours. And so we, we talked in some length and some detail about a succession plan doesn't stand alone on its own, that it's part of a larger talent management system. And I've been involved with other organizations that call them different things, we've chosen to call it talent management. And it's a very comprehensive system that involves not only succession planning, but leadership development, identification of core competencies, performance evaluations, pay systems, and every one of them are intertwined and interconnected to one another for all of them to reach their highest potential and to be successful. Right now, we've got an organization that really has no system in place right now outside of the most rudimentary systems that get us by for payroll needs and whatnot. We have an evaluation system that up to this point has been a meets expectations or doesn't meet expectations with no additional detail in regards to areas for focus in the upcoming year, areas of deficiency, areas for career development. And so we are barking on doing a very comprehensive evaluation for all of our employees to not only ensure that they're accomplishing the goals and responsibilities that come with their position, but we help them grow as individuals and identify areas where they need additional training so we can provide better customer service to our, our citizens so that we can work smarter and not harder by equipping them with the training and the skills they need to do their job, by identifying core competencies, by position and level within the organization and identifying where those gaps exist. So the Silk Road system is, and in the municipal world, and I've been a part of some private sector implementations of Oracle as well, we're more limited and we've got some unique things, as we're all aware, in the, in the municipal world, from a records retention standpoint, from a reporting standpoint. Unfortunately, the options open to us aren't as robust for us, for those comprehensive systems that meet all of our needs like any organization would have, but also comply with a lot of the things we need to from a statutory standpoint. And so, and Councilman Taylor and I had some discussion around this, we didn't find that one system outside of doing a more custom SAP or Oracle-based approach, which would probably be more expensive and more labor-intensive to implement for our organization. But this system, out of all the ones we evaluated, had covered the broadest cross-section of needs that we have from this organization. But we will still have some work cut out for us to make sure that this system talks with our, our financial system from a reporting standpoint and we, we harvest the full value out of it. And so that's, I would greatly welcome any thoughts you've got along those lines, but we really didn't see a better system to meet, you know, the majority, as many of our needs as we, we could possibly hope to. And in regards to metrics, I don't know, Councilman Peterson, outside of, you know, the metrics we're trying to stay focused on, year in and year out with, with no utility rate increases, no tax increases, maintaining high levels, high quality of services, we're very focused on those. We'll always look for those areas for projects that there, there is a, a much more clear black and white point A to point B metric that can be measured by a yes/no decision on a project. Others really feed into a larger system that's going to help us maintain efficiency and effectiveness going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Patrick, for that. I, I think we do share a lot of the same thoughts on, you know, measurable outcomes. I would just point out that that, that old antiquated system produced, in terms of a ongoing expenditure per citizen, a higher level of efficiency by that metric than where we are now. And so, you know, as you said, in God we trust, everyone else bring data. And I, I want to see some of, that, that metric is important to me. I think it's a strong measurement of how efficient we are. And if we could see a commitment to bringing that down because we've got a system that helps us get the most, you know, help our staff members reach their potential and be the most productive and perform the most, that's good for everybody. I can totally support that. I just, I need something I can wrap my arms around because, I mean, not, not to, talk is cheap, money's not. So if we can commit to some money that we're saving the taxpayers or some specific measurable outcome that they find value in, you know, that matters. But until then, it's, I don't know, maybe it makes our lives better, staff or whatever, but if the taxpayers aren't feeling it, I mean, they're having to pay more for it. So what, what are we doing with that? You know, so all great things, I support all those things you're talking about, I just think, all those things should produce a measurable outcome the taxpayers can appreciate. And I think it's our job to tell them what it is.
Sure, sure. Mayor, Councilman Peterson, I agree with this and I guess a point I would make, we're not doing things the way we, we used to do around here and we're not, we no longer have a meets, doesn't meet evaluation system for our employees or in the very near future we won't. So if we were going to do that all from a manual, as the mayor described, a manual basis, I don't know we could keep up with that workload along with the demands that come with our jobs, day in and day out.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing up the question. Let's take just a moment on 31 because I think it'll help the council. And on the way there, I will just make the comment on 24 because this is consent calendar and I might just, we might go over it on Thursday night and the citizens would not appreciate that. I realize 24 is looking to have analysis done for next year, but it is stated in 24 that no utility rate increase for this year's budget and I appreciate that. And on 27A, very excited about the option that will be discussed on Thursday night to have early redemption of, of the bonds and the potential savings of around $2 million for the taxpayers. So let's go to 31, just because, Councilmember Peterson, I think it'll help all, all of us. What was the question on 31?
I was just looking for a, a before and after picture of, you know, polls with the 12 KV lines on them and then what it looks like after they're taken off in context, if we have something.
Mayor and council, I, I don't have that with me at this point in time, but if, if you'd like, I can provide that either at the, at the meeting, I can, I can provide color photos or I can bring it up and, and talk to you at that time, so.
So Thursday night, just to take a minute or two, that would be helpful. So I would say yes, please. Agenda item 39, future meetings. So we have a transportation planning meeting tonight. And then Thursday, I think the council saw that the executive session will not be held at 6, has been moved to next Monday night at 5, but the student citizen of the month will take place at 6:30 and would appreciate your support for that. And you will get an email from Vicki in preparation for the retreat in the next few weeks. We'll have some discussions about thoughts that you have of retreat agenda items and priorities and different things, again, to harvest your feedback for that. Is that a good stopping point for the study session? Study session adjourned. Thank you.